Twenty twenty two. First item on the agenda is going to be the Main Streets presentation from Anita. I'm sorry.
That's fine. Do you need me to do anything formal this evening, introduce myself? Most people know I'm Anita Hardy. I'm with the Main Streets program. And I want to first thank you so very much for having us on the agenda tonight. Before I really get started, though, I do need to introduce a couple of people that are with us tonight. Because while I do have this presentation, they're also going to be helping me in giving us some additional information. And the majority of our Main Streets board is here as well this evening. But I do want to introduce Matt Ashby with Ayers Associates. He is. Absolutely. He is our current managing consultant and partner as we're running the Main Streets program right now. And then Gail Langley is with DOLA. And DOLA is where the Colorado Main Street program is housed. And so Gola, excuse me, Gail would be our kind of our state manager for our Main Street program. Okay, and then again, like I said, most of our board is here tonight. We have a few individuals who are unable to make it just due to other commitments, but mainly we're here. And we prepared this report for you instead of a presentation per se, so that way you could have some reading material and hopefully help explain a little bit about our program. But really, the reason we're here tonight is because we heard you. We heard you trustees, we heard the community. There have been questions that have been asked about who is the Main Street program? What do you do? How do you do it? How are you funded? How are you spending your money? Why are you here? And we want to answer and address those questions for you. I really don't want to give a presentation, be all formal. I really want to make this more conversation and help answer some additional questions for you. And I'm incredibly impassioned about this program, so if I start to ramble, please just tell me to stop. But we, but before I really start digging into all of that, I just wanted to let you know that we appreciate these questions. Between those questions that we've heard from you and that we've understood that have come up over the last several months. And at the time when we lost our impassioned executive director, when she came to work for the town, we as a board had to come together and help answer these questions for ourselves as well. What's our identity? Who are we? How are we going to move forward? The big elephant in the room, right? What are we going to do next? We opted not to just go out and hire a new executive director. We opted instead to contract with Ayers Associates and Matt Ashby to help us with that management and the overall overseeing of the organization to help us move forward while we figure out what to do next. We needed his expertise to help guide us through this. Our board has spent countless hours working together in meetings, in work sessions, in trainings, learning everything there is to know. We have, boy, reviewed, we've read, we've researched, we've heard, we've debated. And finally, we've come together to 100% in agreement, which is fantastic, to get us to where we are today. So now I'm going to back up just a little bit and talk to you a little bit about what is a Main Street program? Because while we all are out there and we're seeing the meat on the street, so to say, you're seeing the pretty things that are occurring. You're seeing the fun things that are occurring. You're seeing us down there having the Wellarama, the Main Street market, putting up flowers, murals, doing some of those fun and exciting things. That's not what we do. That's how we are accomplishing our goals. Back in 1977, I'm going to do a little bit of history report first here. Back in 1977, there was a grassroots organization that came together to create this National Main Street America. And this program was to stimulate economic development in small communities that have a historical proponent, component to them. And in doing that, they put together a strategic plan and said, how can we help these small communities that have historical significance? But how can we help them thrive? How can we help them grow and not just falter or fail or have empty storefronts? How can we help those people in those communities have a quality of life? And they developed this four-point approach that includes such items as beautification, design, organization, and promotion to help stimulate those economic components for that place in their downtown area to help build those communities. So currently, there's over 1,200 Main Street communities across the nation, 1,200. And in Colorado, we have over 80. Wellington is excited to be of one of, I believe, six that are at the highest level of accomplishment for a Main Street community called the Graduate Program. There's been a lot of work for our board and our executive directors that we've had over the years to get to that point. So those four pillars or strategic approaches that the National Main Street America has brought together, every single community throughout Colorado, throughout the nation, we all get to choose. How do we put those together? How do we work on those different approaches to reach that goal of keeping our businesses busy? Bringing people to that area. In our, in our case, our area is downtown. Bringing people there so that they want to spend their money, which spurs economic growth for the community. Because you know, when you spend tax, spend dollars in town, those tax dollars come to the town, which allows the town, you, to decide how to spend that money on the services that the town receives. So you know, that whole circle thing. Every one of these communities does it differently, and we have to. We are a small rural agriculturally based community. But some of our communities in Colorado are mountain communities. Some are big tourist communities, so we all approach it differently. One of the things that we do is the things that you're seeing, and then when people say, oh, we love Main Streets, because we're doing some of those fun things, that's how we do it. But the reason we're doing it behind the scenes, all the hours that we put into it, is to help support that economic growth. Okay, I really can go on for a while about all of this, so. In the written report that you have, we've really tried to identify and share with you some of the benefits that this program has brought to our community. And I hope as residents that you've been able to participate and see what some of that is. When we are having that sense of community, when we bring, when people are coming downtown for different things, such as the market, Wellarama, the elf hunt, the Cleveland crawl that we did in January, some of those items. We hope that brings you downtown to see our businesses. Oh, gosh, we talk about in here as well. You know, some of the financial aspects of the community, and I will dig deep into that meat here in just a moment as well. But we talk about what we've brought in in dollars. Over the course of our time that we've had a Main Street program since 2014, we have brought in to this community through grants, through sponsorships, through money that we've received when we are the beneficiary of other events that are not ours, such as the Brew Fest. Because that is not a Main Street event, that is another event that we receive the proceeds from. The Happy Go Lucky and the Point 5K are also the, not what Main Street events, but we're beneficiaries of. So close to $900,000 we brought back into our community over the last seven years. And those funds have all gone directly into supporting our downtown. Everything from facade improvements. Our very first facade improvement was in 2015, one, just months after the inception of the Main Street program, and that was through a federal home loan advantage program. 10 businesses took advantage of that. Now, I don't know if any of you were here in 2013 and then saw the difference in 2014, but there was a difference. And now in 2022, seeing the latest facade program, which was $569,000 that was brought into Wellington, it's amazing the impact that that's had. I will be the first one to tell you. I was not necessarily a firm believer that just making something pretty was going to make me want to be there until I moved to Wellington. And then when I saw the differences as we're doing, and I became more and more involved and became more and more invested in the Main Street program and saw the impacts in something as simple as a flower planter or a new trash can, new paint. And now I want to go hang out here. I want to go downtown, I want to meet these people. And then building that sense of community as I walk downtown and I can poke my head in any business downtown and say hi and know who those business owners are, know their families, know their kids, they know mine, they ask me about my husband, my kids, my grandkids, that sense of community now because we're down there and we're involved. And it wasn't that I, I just didn't want to go down there when I first moved to town. It just wasn't as inviting, and now we have that impact. Gosh, where do I go next? There are, I talked about the fact that there are over 80 different communities in the state of Colorado that are Main Street communities and that they're all different. Of those 80 communities, every single one of them is not only run differently, but they are structured differently. We just so happen to have had forward thinkers such as Peter Pronco, who's here today with us. He was one of our founding members of the Main Street program to identify that we were going to be managed independently in a 501(c)(3). As I'm sure you're aware, being a 501(c)(3) is a nonprofit allows the Main Street program to apply for grants that other entities might not be able to apply for, to receive sponsorships, donations, and be the recipient of proceeds like we receives from, you know, say, the Brew Fest that we otherwise would not be able to receive. We're thrilled that we have that ability to have that status as a 501(c)(3) because that impact has been huge. Like I mentioned, $877,000 over the course of seven years. That's been reinvested back into downtown. With that, of those over 80 communities, all of them being structured different, in the, in the package and the report, on one of the very first pages is a little chart that shows some of the different structures. Some of our communities around Colorado are structured under, as a collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce. Some are structured under a DDA system such as the Town of Windsor. Some are structured where they are housed underneath their towns, staffing, and then, then they have boards or commissions to run. Gail and Matt can talk to us more about how some of those structures work. We've been working under this independent management piece with that collaboration between the town and Main Streets. So that way we can really provide you, provide you, provide the community, our businesses, that business support and that economic component that the Main Street program is tasked with doing. That's our, that's our job is to help support and, and bring that economic piece to town. I have a proposal that our board, our board has all agreed upon that I want to share with you and ask of you. But I also want to see if you have questions for me, because I know I kind of circled around and touched on a lot of things without going too deep on anything. But before I ramble for hours, as I do, I do want to see what questions that you have for myself or for Gail or Matt, or if there's anything that they feel they need to expand on.
I mean, first off, I think you guys have done a wonderful job. I mean, I'm thrilled with Main Streets and how it's made this town beautiful. Looking forward to continuing with the streets in one way or another. So it's really important to the town as a whole, so.
Pull down your microphone.
I just really appreciate everybody that's been involved in Main Streets. Really beautified the town, really helped the town a lot, and I just appreciate it. And looking forward to continuing with Main Streets in one way or another. So thank you. Trustee Teets, any questions?
I'll wait until someone else might ask some that I might get answered.
So a lot of my questions really are kind of more so about what is the future of Main Streets? And so I, I'd like the mayor, I appreciate the work that you guys have done, getting to work with the town and seeing how you guys stepped up during COVID was huge. It was a big help for our businesses. I appreciate all that Main Streets has done. And I know that's been a conversation too about what does that future look like, financial stability? And you guys brought a proposal, so I think that's great. And so at the point where we talk about that, it's actually, it was great because I'm reading through this and saw the very idea that I talked with, I think the mayor and some of our other trustees, say, at CML, I was talking to one of the other trustees, saying, hey, what if we looked at something like this? Because I know we have concerns about town funding nonprofits, and what does that look like? And I said, well, if we're working together, what if we look at a way to bring them into the town to some level, because I know other towns do it that way. So I'm definitely looking forward to more discussion on that and what that could look like. But other than that, at the moment, no questions. Good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's me. I want to thank you for answering all of my questions that I had via email. I was not aware that we had 83 businesses participating in the Main Streets program, which I think is awesome. So from that question of the 83 that have, and my understanding is it's memberships into downtown for the Main Streets, correct? Not so much a paid membership, but just.
When we first started the Main Street program in 2014, we did have a membership-based program where we had a program area that we served. But businesses and individuals could be members to also participate or partake, or even just show their support. In 2020, we entered into an MOU with the Chamber where we stopped asking individuals or businesses for memberships and left that just to the Chamber of, the Wellington Area Chamber of Commerce to have memberships. The reason we did that was that we were finding between both, between both organizations, businesses were saying, well, I can't afford both. I can only do one. This is one that serves me, this is one that doesn't serve me. And we wanted to stop that spirit of competition and start in a spirit of collaboration and connectivity. And so we stopped the membership base. And anybody that is a member of the Chamber of Commerce is now what they call a friend of Main Streets and took out that portion of funding. If you look through, I think it's pages 13 to 28 or 9, I don't remember the exact page off the top of my head, on our financial components for each year, it will tell you the dollar amount that we received for membership dues. It was a very nominal amount. So it was not a large amount that would have really much impact on our bottom line. That being said, we as a program have what we call, not what we call, what the state, what the National Main Street America, we have a program area. Our program area shifted a couple of years ago to include a couple of streets south of Cleveland Avenue. Goes from First to Sixth, and then it comes all the way up here and encompasses the library and the Leaper Center. That program area is defined, but it's flexible in that our board at any time can make decisions to make adjustments to that area. So our program right now service, serves all property owners, business owners within that identified mapped area. But the impact goes beyond that. Sorry, does that help answer that question?
It does.
Okay.
So and that was going to be my next question. Of all of these businesses, the 83 that do participate through either being on Main Streets or being a friend of the Chamber, how many actually qualify for your grants that you guys applied for?
If they are within our program area, they qualify.
So say, because I think Lisa's Kids Corner and those areas over there are also in your.
That Lisa's Kids Corner on Sixth Avenue unfortunately is not, they are on the, they are unfortunately on the opposite side of the street to where our, our boundaries lie.
Okay, so anything west on Sixth Street? Got it. And then it goes two streets past on Sixth Street?
Correct. And you know, Shreep, I don't have a map of that with me right now, but I can absolutely get that to you, and it is on our website. So you'll be able to see the, and I'm sorry, trustee Teets.
You're fine.
I'm in very.
It doesn't bother me.
You know, I'm very informal. So that boundary map is on our, the Main Streets website. So you'll be able to see exactly what is included in that. And I just, off the top of my head, I'm sure I could point it out, but.
No, it's fine. Just, I'm just curious in looking at kind of mapping and looking at the grants that are coming in. So can residents apply for the grants?
Depends on the grant, right? Every grant has their own specific requirements. So for example, the late, the last grant that we've had here, the Main Street Open for Business Grant, where we had 11 businesses participate and they, everything from painting, roofs, solar, facade. I do believe that residents were allowed to apply for that. Nope, see, this is why we have her. It was specific to commercial businesses. So if there was a, a grant opportunity that came about that would be for business or residential, then absolutely we would not exclude anybody.
Got it. So if I'm thinking, because now our window is a lot bigger than just Cleveland. What my question is, is when you're looking at doing that partnership and pairing, one, my question would be for the town is the MOU you guys have with the Chamber. How is that affected if the town merges with Main Streets? So that's one of my questions, because then we would be funding a profit and a nonprofit through an MOU, correct?
No, that is not correct.
Okay.
The Chamber is a separate entity and they are a 501(c)(6), I believe. Okay, okay, thank you. Trying to remember which designation they had. From our proposal, this would take away the direct cash funding that we've had historically. The MOU that we have with the Chamber at this time is purely a relationship-based MOU where we have agreed not to ask for membership funds from businesses or individuals. And in exchange, the Chamber has agreed to say, hey, if you're a Chamber member, please know that you're also supporting the Main Street program, that we, we work together. There is no money exchanged between the Main Street program and the Wellington Area Chamber of Commerce. The only time that there might be a dollar that goes back and forth is if we're reimbursing them for something that they purchased or we collaborate on the Christmas decoration competition. And there are three prizes every year, $100, $75, and a $50. And we each put in 50%. So there might be, I mean, depends on who pays the winners first. But there's no money exchanged between our two organizations.
Got it. So that would kind of be my question then, is when you're looking at it as entities, where you guys, Main Streets, would be using funding that you guys have raised and stuff like that? We would now be utilizing town funds to match that donation? I guess that's kind of what I'm trying to figure out in this balance of things is the funding that you guys do and partnerships and stuff like that, how it's related to an MOU with the Chamber? If the Chamber will be affected financially, if we take on Main Streets as part of the town? And I don't know, maybe that is stuff that Patty needs to look into. It was just one of those things that I had flagged here is how does that relationship get affected if we are absorbing a town staff for the Main Streets program?
You know what? That is a great question. And unfortunately, I don't have all those answers right now. And I really think the best thing that we can do, and I, when we're ready and I can kind of dig deeper into the proposal that we're bringing tonight, is questions like that are, that are very specific to the financial, how we're going to use dollars on a day-to-day basis are things that I think that this committee that we're proposing can kind of help us identify. Because those things do need to be worked out. And our proposal is not to completely give up our identity as a program either. It is to still retain some autonomy through a, a board or a commission and to retain that 501(c)(3). So again, I can go, when you're ready, I just wanted to ask, answer questions before we got into that dig. I think that's going to be something we're going to be able to figure out.
Got it, yeah. And so, and those are kind of what my questions revolve around is how, how this works with making sure, say, Fitness One. If they, they don't qualify for anything, they're not in your district. So when I look at it, I'm like Align Medical, Fitness One, Sparge, Sunkist Hands.
Let's headline this and hear the proposal and see what we can do with it.
Do, so we ask questions or we're just listening to a proposal in a work session?
Okay.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have her present the proposal, then we can talk about it. Be good.
Yeah, because I think within this proposal, some of that question that you're bringing up right here, I'm really excited to answer. I really am, because I, I think, I believe in everything that we've been through with, with our, the Main Streets board in the last six months, that has been a topic, definitely. Okay. So our proposal that we're bringing tonight, if we were there, ready for that?
Yeah.
Okay. As we'd like to propose that we have, that we develop and create a five-person committee, a short-term committee, call it what you will, exploratory committee, ad hoc committee, figure out the answers committee. I can come up with all sorts of different names for you. This, what we'd like to ask for is two trustees who are willing to support us and help us move forward, because our goal here is to maintain our program, to not lose our program, to maintain and sustain the collaboration of the Main Streets with the community and to keep doing the good work that we've, we've been doing and keep that momentum going. So we'd really like to make sure that we get two trustees on this committee. We would like to have two representatives from our Main Streets program. And we'd like to ask for the fifth person to be a town staff individual. With that, we'd like to ask that this committee help identify and answer some pretty important questions. We're asking that the town absorb the management role of the, what the executive director did for the Main Streets program. We're not asking that that be a full-time position, we don't know that answer. That's what we need this committee for. But we do know that there are specific requirements in order to maintain that Main Street program graduate status and just to maintain the Main Street program that needs to be completed. So we'd ask that this committee make sure that we look at what are those requirements? What does this individual's job description need to look like? Is this a job description that can be absorbed into a current role? Or is this a new role that the town might need to create? We don't know the answer to that. We don't work for the town. Then we'd also like this committee to look at what does an advisory board or a commission look like? Who are individuals that could make that work? Because if I have learned. Because if I have learned nothing over the last six months, is that the volunteers are what makes this program shine. Our executive directors, and we've had four fantastic executive directors in our time. Each one of them have been fabulous. But our volunteers, where are the boots on the ground? And so we do still need to have that advisory board or commission, again, whatever this committee deems is the most appropriate. But the questions that need to be asked there is how do we make that, those selections? What are their terms? We're going to have to be looking at our bylaws that we have and make adjustments. We're going to have to look at those policies that we've created and we've spent a lot of time in the last several years creating those and probably make some adjustments. And we're needing that committee to help us with that. We don't have all the answers. We have some pretty good ideas. We're asking that this committee work with helping us identify what the accountability and the reporting is, not only just from the commission or that advisory board, but also from that staff person. And maintaining the requirements for the board, excuse me, for the program and bringing that information back to the trustees. What are those items that need to be evaluated and looked at? And then the big elephant in the room, I mean, the biggest elephant, right? What is the budget? What is the budget for a staff person? What is the budget? How does the, how does it work to maintain that five oh one C three? Our current Main Street Program manages that five oh one C three. We have tax returns we have to submit. We have reports that we have to complete. How do we maintain that five oh one C three? Maintain that Main Street Program in Wellington? While also having this under the town staffing? I know it can be done, because Gail and Matt here have shared with us that there's other communities in Colorado that do this. So we, we have experts to assist us in this as well. And, and we as a board have also been working hard to make sure that we understand where our budget is today and through the end of the year. Our proposal is also asking that this committee work pretty quickly. In order to help meet your deadlines, we know that budget's coming up here this fall and you guys are getting started on that probably pretty quickly. We also know that those budgets have to go to DOLA, have to be approved. We'd really like to be able to work through this proposal. And if it all comes together and we all can be in agreement with moving forward here and even from the town's staff side, because this is putting an additional individual in their pocket as well. And I don't know these deadlines. Patty's shared some with me about how this works, but you and she knows more than I do as far as I'm, I'm sure there's going to have to be an ordinance to make the changes for this. I'm sure we're going to have to have input. So we're asking that this moves pretty quickly in order to meet what our goal would be is this transition to be January of twenty twenty-three. That's our proposal in a nutshell. Page thirty-three. So to answer your question, trustee teeths, on how all of those pieces work, some of them are going to have to be answered when we're putting this together. Because it sounds like we're maintaining a five oh one C three and we have a staff person. Main Street Program itself is not going to be coming to the trustees at budget time and saying, we need a line item of dollars for our program. Our funding from the five oh one C piece is going to have to come from other avenues. While the management component would more than likely be coming then from your town staff. He's. But again, I'm not the expert on all of that. We'll have to work through that together. Thus the theme of better together.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Of the municipalities that are in the graduate program, how many of them have it underneath the town?
I'm going to bring Gail here to help answer these questions.
Table in here, I want to say.
Oh, wait, okay. Lions Ridge Way, there I see it. Okay. That answers my question. How many of those started off as a five oh one C three and then transitioned or did any of them transition? Do you know that?
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
So I've been at DOLA for a little over five years, heading up the Main Street Program. And before that, I was a manager, an executive director in Granby, which was a chamber organization that also housed the Main Street Program and the Visitor Center. So your question, could you repeat that for me, please?
Yeah, how many of them have transitioned from being like what we currently are with our Main Streets into the town?
Currently, it's a, a conversation that a few of the communities have, not only Wellington, but one other community because of funding limitations in their town. So they wanted to keep the friends of or the five oh one C six to leverage other funding opportunity. But they are negotiating with the town to bring the management of the program back under the town until people can figure out what the impacts of this recession are going to be.
Yeah. So it sounds like it's kind of, it is more cost-effective for the town to take over the management portion, maintain the five oh one C three separately through the committee?
I, I would agree with that. I think there's some benefits to maintaining the five oh one C six. We see grants come through DOLA and a variety of partner agencies that the town can't apply for, but a nonprofit can. And we connect those dots with our programs as well as chambers that are not necessarily the lead on the programs, but that's our job.
Okay. One other question. So I know currently, so there's a certain area in which the Main Streets can operate. If slash when it is brought underneath the town, can it then be operated throughout the town without being remapped? Or how does that work?
Well, the Main Street boundary is determined within a community. We don't dictate that. But what we'd like to give is advice in boundaries change, as it did up here a couple of years ago, is think of it as your downtown commerce and hub. You know, the place where Main Street meets vibe, the place where people want to go for, come for activities or sometimes events, sometimes the events are held outside of town. With growth that you guys are going to be experiencing on the West End and a lot of new growth I just saw, I haven't been up since before COVID. On the East Side, I have seen in larger communities where they have two districts, where there's a downtown hub and then is, you know, like an historic district being a separate area that wouldn't necessarily be defined as Main Street if it's outside that walkable area.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure. My voice is a little scratchy today. Oh, can I just say one other thing, though? I know Anita said there was over eighty communities, but in all reality, official Main Street communities, there's only twenty-two in the state. And six of those are graduate communities. The rest of them are designated or the lower level candidate. This program is prestigious. It offers a lot of credibility to partner agencies and sister agencies that are looking and reviewing grant applications. I was heavily involved in your C dot last year and congratulations on your award this year. We provided some consulting services to help with that review. I also said on C dot as well as my staff, oh, edit. When they see your agree, Main Street Community and a graduate Main Street community, it carries a lot of credibility that if they give you money, that you're going to be in compliant of the grant agreement. You're going to be compliant with the reporting and you're going to do a stellar job, just like you did with the Main Street Open for Business Grant. And I need to applaud you on that. You guys spent, I believe, every single penny that my program gave you. So I congratulate you on that. Your downtown is looking in tip-top shape.
I, I don't think I've got any questions. You, you guys obviously do a great job. Thank you to the board, Mr. Ashby, Ms. Langley, Ms. Ms. Hardy. Thank, thank you guys for coming down. No, I think it's, it's a great idea to do an exploratory committee. I'd be in support of leaving it as a five oh one C three and you know, see what that takes to bring somebody on board, so.
Trustee Gator.
Thank you for going through all of that and giving more explanation. I think in terms of questions, I don't have a lot that I, I, the questions I have, I think would think things that are explored by that committee, and I think that's a good idea. So it's not the town telling Main Street, here's how it's going to go. It's not Main Street telling the town, here's how it's going to go. It's having that you know, having members of the board who sit on that and say, okay, here's what we would need to see as elected officials to say, okay, this is a good use of funds. I agree. I think it would be more cost-effective because I mean, I know that we have done about eighty thousand dollars in the past several years to help funding for staffing, that executive director and having staffing is expensive. But if we look at that from the town standpoint, we've already got HR, we've already got accounting, we've already got all these things that in a lot of cases are already being covered in the town. So that I believe it would be more cost-effective if that's, if, if the purpose of the town giving money to Main Streets is mainly for that position, if we can bring that into the town. And for me, that also helps us cross that bridge. Because again, for me, not that five oh one C threes don't do great work, they do. But then it's like, okay, how do we choose winners and losers, right? Well, we support this one, but we don't support that one. And, and when we just say, okay, well, we're not giving money to any, we're have a staff member that oversees the Main Streets Program, because that is something that's in conjunction with the state through the town. It's not something that just any five oh one C three could just say, hey, we're now doing a Main Streets Programs, like they have to work with municipality. So for me, I think that that helps to bridge some of the gaps that I see. But I think in the details, that's something that the committee would have to work out. So I think this is a good idea and I would be more than willing to be one of those members that sits on that committee from the Board of Trustees to help work through what this can look like.
Can I just respond real quick, please? We appreciate that. I appreciate what your comments are here, too. One of the things that we did evaluate or talk about when we were evaluating some of the different options that we had that we felt would really help a lot is in providing some stability for a staff member. We, we've been a program for just a slightly over seven years, going on eight years now. We've had four different executive directors. Every single one of them has brought in something unique. Every single one of them has been fantastic and helped propel the program forward to that next level. The one thing we have not been able to provide them is stability. And so one of the reasons that we felt that this was a good direction for us in bringing this proposal and asking for this to work collaboratively with you was in order to help provide a staff employee that can really support this program. Somebody that's going to be able to really stick with us, really take it for the long haul. Yes, sir.
So one of the hats that I wear also as a consultant, we also provide services managing downtown associations. We do manage the Windsor Downtown Development Authority as an AERS contract as well. But that aside of knowing kind of the boots-on-the-ground side of things, I am also the chairman of the Wyoming State Advisory Board for the Main Street Program in Wyoming. And one of the difficulties that we've seen is that when you do have a situation where it's not as stable of a funding source with those nonprofits, so many of those positions are scrambling to keep the lights on. And that means that they're raising funds and they're not necessarily focusing on the mission at hand of improving the downtown. So by having that stability of bringing this type of a position into the town, you allow that position to be even more effective at achieving the goals of what that overall program is. In Wyoming, we have fifteen communities that are currently part of the Main Street Program. Gail can speak to the twenty-two here in Colorado. And this is a common theme that we often see is that stability issue. So to be able to move, remove some of those barriers to stability ultimately helps you as a community be more effective at providing a vibrant downtown that helps your local economy, helps attract growth and vibrancy overall to the community. And, and I think the the stability of the position being within the overall arching local government structure does provide that opportunity for HR support. You know, all of those benefits that come with local government. So while the directors have provided outstanding things, at least in my experience, I've found that it takes at least two years before you really know and understand a job. And by that time, you're starting to see people migrate out and you've lost that experience. So to be able to have this in a more stable circumstance, you all will reap more rewards on and return on investment on the dollars that you invest.
Thank you for that.
There must be something in the room.
Um, I'm excited to see where this committee will go and learning and I also motion John's idea. I would love to learn more about the program. If there is members that need to be picked, I would enjoy learning just including that you're looking at CAC and the Board Liaison Position as well. I think it would be awesome to have that connection between the Chamber, the Main Streets and the Community Activities Commission to learn more about what we can do to intertwine them all together. So I'm interested in learning more. I don't know a lot about it. I've volunteered with pretty much every committee out there. So I'm excited to see where this will go and if we do have potential to figure out how to successfully bring it in if we can.
I want to thank you for what you're doing. Yeah. Just given the stability here for what you guys are doing and then having the oversight. I mean, I think that's catching all the different areas that we are concerned about or should be concerned about. And when you're looking at some of the different towns that's in here, you know, Windsor, I think has done a fantastic job with what they've done. Leadville has done a fantastic job. It's made them unique. And that's one of the things that we're talking about in our growth here. It's not just growing to be growing, but we want to have our own identity, making sure that we preserve that and grow off of it. And you'll do the businesses, expand on the businesses, expand on the old town feel. So love what you're doing. Thank you.
And then I think we have another board member on Zoom. I don't know if she, if she wants to speak on this, she can. I think Ashley's on Zoom. Give her the option or.
I'll do my best. The internet is not super great. Thank you much, so much for the opportunity to speak. It was a wonderful presentation, Anita, and you brought up some really great points. I'm really excited to see what comes out of.
Sounds like a yes from her.
Thanks, Ashley, if you can hear us. Yeah, I think it's killer. We all, we all think it's killer idea.
Main Streets underneath the wing of the town. I think it's been a huge benefit. I met with Diane Butler today. I think she's on the, the Main Streets Board. And she had nothing but phenomenal things to say about the Wellington Main Streets Program and what you guys are working on. And that you guys are really kind of like the catalyst for what other groups could be moving forward.
Yeah.
Great. I would just really like that yourself, Patty, myself could get together within the next week or two and kind of identify who these individuals could be to work on this committee and, and get them started to move forward. Sounds like we're all in, in agreement there. Does anybody have any additional questions or thoughts for even Gail or Matt while we're here?
Who's your grant writer?
Boy, we have several individuals who have worked on grants over the years. Callie has, Callie Cooper has written some over the years. I have written some over the years. We've had Kelly Hodling with the town have taken some. Oh, gosh. Haley, I think, Hallie wrote one for us once. So it has been kind of a collaborative effort. Most of our grants, though, do then also get an oversight before we submit them. Our last couple of big grants, as Gail noted, that we have had technical supervision as well to assist us with those.
You'll be able to, you'll be able to collaborate with the city once we get this done, if this is what we decide. You'll be able to, you'll be able to collaborate with the city once we get this done, if this is what we decide.
I've assisted the town several times with some different grants. Yes, I'm more than happy. They have my direct line.
Let's get it done.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Question, not question for you more so internally. Um, so with making appointments, does this something that you guys need to chat prior to our meeting next Tuesday? Is it something that we need to like put on an agenda so that we can actually appoint?
I I've added to our future meetings agenda and we the mayor and I can talk about it when we meet on it at our Thursday meeting.
Okay.
Sound good?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Um, all right. Next one is the Stormwater Master Plan and Project Update. Nathan Newer.
I saw. Since I'm a chamber member, can I vote on this thing?
It shouldn't be a problem. A good Dan question.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, trustees. Nathan Ewer, engineer at the town. Um, tonight, we are providing a presentation on the Stormwater Master Plan Project. I'll give a quick background. I know a lot of you weren't on the board last summer, but um this Stormwater Master Plan is being funded through the Flood Mitigation Assistance Program Grant from the Colorado Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. The total award for this grant was a hundred fifty thousand, and that's a hundred twelve thousand five hundred. That's uh state federal funded and then thirty-seven thousand five hundred. That is town matching funds. Last summer, early summer, we issued a request for proposals and we ended up select selecting Icon Engineering as our consultant for the project. We kicked it off in late July and we've been steadily working through uh our scope that is outlined within our grant. As part of that scope, we did include a presentation to the Town Board, and so tonight we are here to provide that presentation. Um, from Icon, I have the project manager, uh Jacqueline Michelson, and then I also have the master plan lead, uh Jeremy Desher with us to provide the update and also discuss all our alternative development. Um, we do have some slides where we'll be asking for input. If you have any, um feel free to to interrupt us. And then also, as questions come up, feel free to, you know, interrupt the presentation and go ahead and just we'll keep it fairly informal. Um, and with that, I'll turn it over to Jacqueline and Jeremy.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. If anything comes up as we go through here, feel free to interrupt. There's no reason to hold questions or anything for the end and appreciate everybody's time this evening. So yeah, Jeremy Deisher with the Icon Engineering, we're water resources civil engineering firm based out of Centennial. And then Jackie's our Northern Colorado lead. She's works out of Fort Collins. So just a brief agenda for the scene. We just want to give some quick introductions and then just kind of go through what is stormwater and what is typical storm drain system and then kind of go from what it is to what the town's got to where we need to go in the future and really give a a great guiding document to get into the into the future. So yeah, we've been working with Bob and Nathan pretty closely with the town. And then like Nathan was saying, Jackie's project manager, I'm the master plan lead, and then David Crooks, he's actually on vacation this week, but he's our project engineer. So just kind of start at the very beginning. There's two main things. When you look at these stormwater master plans, there's the hydrology piece and then the hydraulics. So if we kind of start with the hydrology, you'll hear about these design storms. And so they kind of increase in severity to say, okay, what's a typical annual chance that a certain amount of rainfall is going to fall over the whole watershed? And so that's what you'll hear your hill two year, five year. And then there's kind of a difference that we got a table later that will help explain a little bit of going from percent annual chance per year to the interval of saying like a hundred year storm doesn't occur once every hundred years. It's got a one percent annual chance every year of occurring. So once that kind of rainfall gets on the ground, soaks in and kind of the resulting flows called the runoff. So that's just the amount of flow that's really getting into the streets, getting into the channels, kind of basically the runoff that we're going to plan for as part of this master plan. And then we kind of pick design points. So we kind of group certain areas by the topography and the way the water flows down the streets and say, hey, we want to know the intersection at this, these six different intersections. We want to know the design flow to try to design our infrastructure. So those certain areas are called subwatersheds. And then when you kind of group those out into bigger areas, we just call those watersheds, which is just a group of sub watershed. And then kind of going back to that discharge and runoff. Um, the best way to think about this, we measure everything in CFS or cubic feet per second. Easiest way I've always say is just think about a basketball. It's about a foot by a foot by a foot. So whenever you hear these cubic feet per second, just think that's how many basketballs are going to be coming down this channel or or in the pipe. Exactly. And then uh FEMA does regulate certain flood planes and the town has that. We will get into that, that that's not a big focus, but just everybody knows that they are. I'll mention FEMA flood plans a couple of times. And they regulate based off those certain divine design intervals, whether it be a hundred year storm or five hundred year storm, they had different regulations for all that kind of information. So the very basis, kind of what is storm drainage and stormwater runoff? So basically, our our main goal is protect the people, property and the environment. And so what we're doing is either by surface runoff in channels or in pipes underneath the ground, collect all that flow from the neighborhoods, get it to a creek and let it safely go downstream to the next tributaries. And so I kind of included a couple of pictures here, just typical infrastructures. The one on the left is open channel. So all that rock we call riprap. That's just when you have a big covert and flows coming out, you want to slow that flow down and not let it erode the channel downstream. And then there are also subsurface features with this big inlet over here on the top right. And so that will collect flow. Also makes a great raccoon habitat. So I just want to include some certain pictures. Um, I know everybody sees them in their day to day life, but you may not know what the intent of these are. So on the left, we have two different inlet types. The top left one, there's what we call curb opening inlet. And then there also be graded options. So just based off the neighborhood and your design flows, there's different situations where you choose each one of those. And then whenever you want to cross underneath the roadway, you'll have these things called culverts. Uh, the one there in the top, you can have really small ones. Those are like eighteen and twenty-four inch in diameter. Or you can see in the bottom right, you can get some really big, really big infrastructure, depending on what size of flow and what sort of design interval that you're aiming to pass underneath that roadway without overtopping. And so we also have the subsurface flows, but there are flows on the surface. A lot of the times around developments and neighborhoods, it's cheaper than putting in all that pipe is to keep the flow on the surface and spread it out and use it kind of to water the different grass and open space. So that's a couple of pictures over here on the left of grass whale. And then once you have enough flow where all those grass whales kind of combine, then you'll go into more like an open channel, like the Coal Creek there, running parallel to the the highway. So something anytime that development comes into place, what they're required to do is build these detention basins kind of outlined in red. And so most of the time, they're just like a big depressed grassy area that basically serves as parks when it's dry. But then when the storm does come, because when development comes in, they're paving over a lot of open space so that rainwater would have just soaked in previously. So they have to treat that water and make sure that they're not impacting anybody adversely downstream. So they're limited to a certain flow rate to say, hey, you can't release any more flow now than what was here before you came. So that's what these do is they just kind of collect the water, store them, and then slowly release them. You'll see these funky outlet structures there in the lower left. And those are just for certain design flow rates to say, the water is four feet high. This is how much goes out. Once you get us up to six feet, more water is going through. And then not typically used for stormwater, but there are also irrigation canals. And so typically, we don't like to use those for stormwater because the ditch companies usually control more of those than anybody can really enforce any rules. And if you're not careful, what ends up happening is people discharge stormwater in here. And then you have uncontrolled spills where that canal and all those roadway crossings down were not designed to convey all that flow. So then all of a sudden, you've got more flow than it was anticipated and it's spilling out hurting people when that really wasn't identified anywhere. So kind of we put all those pieces together. So say we have a rainstorm. So it's coming down onto the street and then it's going to be conveyed to those intersections to our design point for the sub watershed. And then somehow we've got to get that flow to the rivers. Those purple lines kind of represent the pipes and the storm drains. And so you kind of build those throughout the neighborhoods and then build inlets at each intersection. And then that water is conveyed down to the detention basin where that flow is kind of stored until it can slowly be released to the creek at kind of his historic's level. So those purple lines there release flow slowly to the creek and then over time, and these can even stay up near a day. I mean, it can go up to like forty hours or least time to to give them time to detain it, but just not to make sure there's not any water rights issues or anything like that. They will, they will eventually dry up. So now that we kind of have a little bit of background on what storm drainage is, why are we here and what's the point of the stormwater master plan? So we're going to kind of take take both the existing town boundary and the growth management area and try to do both planning for the future and looking at existing saying, hey, where's our problems currently? And let's try to plan ten, twenty years into the future and really get a good feeling of where is flow. So you don't end up in a situation of a development comes in and all of a sudden there's no, no room for the water to go. So we're studying here and you'll see this pluvial hazards. That's just like urban flooding. That's just kind of a difference of like, we're not worried about Box Elder Creek with this study. We're not worried though with the flood planes that I mentioned before. We're just looking at like, hey, if if the storm is just over the town, where's the flow going to go? And so once we do that, we'll go through our existing conditions analysis, start to develop some alternatives to mitigate the flooding. And then we'll try to prioritize improvements that then go into a town CIP plan that we can pursue some funding. And then, like I mentioned, it's not going to change any regulated flood planes. Nobody's going to need to get insurance or anything from that from this study. And we're not, we're kind of kind of treat the irrigation canals. What we do in hydrology is say, what if they're completely full at the start of the storm? Just to be conservative so that we can plan that infrastructure downstream. So I found this really interesting, just a couple of screenshots from nineteen ninety-nine and twenty twenty-one of the town and kind of say, hey, there hasn't been really any planning up to here. It's critical to get something in place and start looking into the future. Because here in another twenty years, just imagine how big everything's going to get and how much infrastructure is really going to be in play. So that's what we're really doing. We want to address problems that the town's currently seeing, but also provide some sort of guiding document that when you start to expand in X areas in here, you have a document that says, hey, this is what was planned for and kind of give more, more resources there. It's a little bit of our scope, like Nathan was saying, we started kind of last fall and been working through that existing conditions and alternatives. And so right now we're finishing up the alternatives and then getting into a conceptual design. And then as part of this study, we'll also be updating the Stormwater Manual, just kind of reviewing all the municipalities in the area and making sure that kind of Wellington still up to speed with all the, all the local specs. And then here, as we conclude in the fall, we'll complete the study and then be submitting those prioritized outfalls for the five year CIP budget. I know I mentioned a lot about the kind of the theoretical rainstorm, those design events and I always, I always like to put pictures of like, yeah, these, these are design storms in our models, but flooding happens. And so these, these are just some pictures of last July where there was a twenty-five to a fifty year rain event happened. So then that goes back to there's a two to four percent annual chance that that could happen any year. And it's kind of flooding throughout town there. You had Fifth Street, Coal Creek, your Rice Elementary, and then over in the meadows got hit pretty hard with the different flooding. So it is theoretical in our model and we're picking out design storms that we're going to design these improvements to, but it's obvious that there's issues out there and trying to fix them. So here's just kind of a picture of the growth management area outlined there in red. And so you can see the current town boundary is about four square miles. So as part of this study, we were trying to plan for about twenty-two square miles. And we ended up with three hundred subwatersheds for this study for all of those different design storm events. So quite a bit of information that will be available and really helps us out when we get into alternatives to see what's the best solution for the town. Is it something smaller that costs less money that we can actually get built, but it's not going to provide as much protection? Or do we go with some larger infrastructure? It might need more funding, but it's going to protect up to a ten year level, something along those lines. So until we kind of got all those design points and subwatersheds done, we moved on to the hydraulics phase. And so this is what we call a rain on grid. So this kind of model is taking, takes all your terrain data, it's going to put rain basically all over the watershed. And so the darker colors here, as you can kind of see, is the deeper flow depth. So that kind of helps us identify, okay, what is the model saying? Where the problems are, and then we can check that with the great resources the town has to say, hey, have you experienced any flooding here? Or is it just something that the model is flagging to help plan for the future? So again, it's not worrying about any of the riverine flooding for the upstream watershed for Box Elders, just focused on the GMA. And then we kind of identify these things. We call them PIA's for potential inundation areas, just kind of best information available for the town. It's not going to FEMA. It's not going to require anybody to get insurance, anything, anything along those lines. So after we kind of looked at the model and then talked with the town, we moved into our problem identification. And this is definitely something we're open to any feedback we have from both the board or any residents, if you know any flooding issues that you see every summer, anything like this. This is just kind of an example out of the figure we'll have in the report, just trying to identify areas where either the model showed something or the town had previous flooding. And so we'll kind of group them to be like, okay, is this a low, medium or high issue? And then we kind of prioritize to say, hey, the high ones are the ones that needs to be fixed. Those are the ones we need to be planning for. Those are the ones we need to pursue funding for. And so those are definitely the significant problems, but we still want to acknowledge the other problem areas just to document it. And then in the future, if there's any smaller resources available, that's documented and somebody's not digging through the archives to find those locations. So after that, we kind of prioritized everything. And this is the kind of phase we're in now is trying to look at those priorities and gather feedback from everybody still. Say, okay, hey, we know the problem. Let's figure out what in the world we can do here. So each one of these orange lines indicates somewhere where we're kind of looking at a recommended solution, whether it be pipes or open channels or detention or anything like that, just kind of say, okay, let's try to balance fixing existing flooding hazards and fixing things going into the future. So we're both gonna both kind of provide that infrastructure for the town because there are a lot of existing floodings. And as part of that, something that I haven't kind of recognized since there's, there's a lot of great infrastructure already in place and kind of encouraging that room ma- routine maintenance is critical because you can have a great detain, one of those detention basins and fill up with water. But if you let cattails grow up in it for ten years, then it's just going to fill in with silt. And then when you're relying on it to store water, it's just going to spill downstream and damage even more properties. So that's definitely something that will be recognized in the master plan is getting a maintenance program and making sure that's being taken care of. Yeah.
And the master plan, when we're looking at what's needed emergent now compared to what we can look at down the road. Can, is this an option where we address, say, Cleveland Avenue first? And then move out from there because in a growth management area, we're not building there and Cleveland Avenue is a definite need. So is that something where we look at where like the GMA area? Yes, it's good to identify it, but it's not super concerning now, but focusing on the residents and around their properties now.
Yep. That's the exact approach we're going to take. It's kind of plan when we go into saying, okay, hey, here's our fifteen alternatives that we can do everywhere. And then we move into, okay, we're going to provide a recommended plan that the town can comment on saying, okay, here's the outfalls we would do. And then within that subset, we say, let's prioritize even those improvements to say, you need to build kind of an order of phasing of one, two, three, because you also don't want to build infrastructure upstream that brings more water down near the town before you can build that infrastructure there as well. So yeah, that's definitely something that will go into the priorities of the master plan. And so I just kind of wanted to run through a couple of slides of what we're looking at. So the kind of picture on the left is the old Coal Creek flow path, kind of coming down into town. So that black arrows just generally flow path. And then you can kind of see just north of Washington there on the right with that purple boundary. You can see quite a bit of flooding and it overtops Washington and it gets in the Windsor ditch and then keeps coming down. So that was definitely one of the highest priority areas. It's like, okay, let's try to take care of Old Town and figure out some sort of series of plans to kind of mitigate that flooding and maybe it doesn't solve the hundred year event just due to funding and realistic projects there, but maybe solve something that's going to frequent. projects there, but maybe solve something that's going to frequently occur is like the hundred year has that one percent annual chance. Let's look at a two or a five or a ten that's got a much higher chance of happening each year and really impacting residents. And so here, one, one thing we will be proposing is a big box culvert in Washington Street. And so that will kind of intercept all those flows coming from the north. And then convey flows west to Box Elder and discharge those safely. So that will cut off a lot of this flow that you're kind of seeing through Old Town. There in the middle to say, hey, let's capture it before it gets here and gets to be a problem. And then also really reduces the infrastructure size that we need in Old Town if all that water is not even getting there.
I'm sorry, explain that one more time because the picture that I see is just a little bit more blurry.
Yeah. So like on the right-hand side, you see kind of those dark blues that's just north of Washington. And so what we're, I don't know if my cursor does not show up. Oh, maybe. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So just north of Washington. All this flow kind of keeps coming south down this flow path into town. And so what we're saying is, hey, let's get some inlets. And let's intercept some of this flow before it comes down here and causes even more problems. And so this would be like underneath the roadway within the town right of way. Let's build some big box culverts. This one, I think for the ten-year flows, something on the order of like a, whoops, it's going ahead on me. Like a eight foot wide by four foot tall box culvert. And then so that would intercept all the flow, all the flow from the north. Because kind of this big black arrow this in this left one is kind of that flow path. And so this is a big, so that purple one goes back to that watershed. So that's just a combination of all of the areas that we think are going to get kind of pointed right towards Old Town. So we're saying is, hey, let's intercept that flow even before it gets to Old Town. And so that would kind of go in conjunction with something along here just south of Cleveland. And so these two kind of outfalls are along Fifth and then Third, and then it turns on Lincoln. And those would kind of supplement the Washington to say, they're still going to be flooding downtown. There's not a lot of stormwater infrastructure there. Let's get all that flow off Cleveland, get it to Coal Creek as quick as we can. So there's, there's a couple of different flow paths. So there's, there's some water coming down Sixth. Kind of there from the northeast, which that Fifth Avenue red line would intercept. And then again, there's some flow coming down there from the central there along Fourth and Third that would kind of get to Cleveland. So we'd, we'd intercept that on the north side of the street. And then kind of convey it south. And then discharge it to that existing channel along Coal Creek. So these are the kind of things we're going through now is going in, getting the terrain data, making sure the water will actually drain, making sure the slopes work. And kind of going through, hey, what would a two-year system? If we wanted something smaller that would cost less, what benefits does that provide the town versus? Hey, could we build a ten-year system and really protect all these infrastructure buildings and all these residents up to that higher design storm? So that's kind of where we are right now. So once we kind of get through this process of trying to develop all those alternatives and get all the feedback, we will proceed into what we call conceptual design. So it's not construction documents or anything like that. So we we approximate it to be about twenty percent level where a hundred percent is go build it. So we try to get it here and make sure that it's feasible. So you don't go pursue a grant. And then somebody comes back and says, there's no way you can even build this. What are you guys doing? So we get it to kind of what we'll call a preliminary twenty percent design level to make us feel confident that our cost estimates are working. And give the town a good number to say, okay, this is what we think the construction will be. Let's go try to pursue some of that funding.
But it will definitely come back to us for advisement before we say run out and.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. And that's, that, that gets to this slide here is once we kind of get through all those alternatives and everything, it'll definitely, the plan will definitely be adopted before the board before we do anything like that. So that's kind of where we are now is trying to engage the community, excuse me, community and any problem IDs and see if there's anything that wasn't identified in those other things, kind of get through the alternatives. And then have to go through and do all of our engineering cost estimates and then prioritize the outfalls to say, hey, we think you should build south of Cleveland before you build Washington because the Washington is going to cost so much more. What's realistic to really help the residents now versus, hey, in twenty years, when you have unlimited funds, go ahead and build everything. So.
All it takes is just twenty years.
Exactly, exactly.
It's on the record.
Yeah.
You had said something about putting a survey out to residents to identify flooding and stuff like that. Is that something that we can start early and will that aid and assist when you guys are going through that to stop and say, okay, multiple people are identifying this flooding. I'm not everywhere in town. But would that assist if a survey did go out sooner rather than later to identify?
Yeah, absolutely. Crowdsourcing is always the best solution of because yeah, like you say, not everybody's going to drive around all around town every time there's a flood. So yeah, getting any of that input and feedback and trying to prioritize those issues that are a significant issue now that we could solve would be great.
So you had mentioned that one of the things you guys are working on right now is that community engagement. What does that look like?
That is, well, first step is tonight. And that's what, that's kind of what we're getting at is I think our plan is to get through at least some of the baseline, the bigger alternatives. That's like, yes, the model and the history show these. And these are going to be significant CIP projects. And then some of the maintenance of the frequently flooding projects would kind of be following that community engagement. So trying to give people an idea of like, hey, here, here's what we're proposing. And then kind of saying, okay, in addition to these huge outfalls, these are kind of be supplemental things and try to engage the community that way.
Okay. So are we talking through surveys? Are we talking like a town hall or it looks like Nathan's about?
Um, so the alternatives that you kind of saw outlined in the, the slides tonight. Those were initially, those were provided through feedback. Mainly from town staff. I've also, some of the photos you saw on Fifth, you know, we just paved Fifth, which pains me to see a storm drain going down that thing. But you know, for instance, on that, you know, I was out and homeowner was like, hey, I've got photos of when it flooded in July. Do you want to take them? And that's, that's how I got those. I was out on the east side over in in the meadows, looking at some of the, some of those actually came unsolicited to Bob, the Public Works Director. And he would just forward those to me and then I'd go out and normally if I could, when I was out looking at that stuff, I could catch a homeowner out in their yard. I would ask him, like, hey, have you ever seen this flood? That's where we are. I don't know that we necessarily have any set plans to create a survey if, if, if you want us to, we can certainly do that. I don't know what that would look like. I would have to, you know, maybe get with Mahela and see if, if an online survey is, is something feasible. I don't, I don't know if mailings would be appropriate for something like this. But we can certainly look, look into it. I mean, we're, we're open, I guess. We're not, we're not past that point yet.
Okay.
So we've got our sort of our, our select areas that I've gotten feedback on and, and we're certainly open if, if you want us to go out and get additional feedback, we can do that.
I think it'd be helpful just to, I don't, I agree with you. I don't think a mailed survey necessarily for this, but something that people can do online or letting people know, hey, maybe we've got a printed one if they don't want to do it online, but they can come into the office and say, hey, you can go by town hall. They'll have some printed ones there. You can grab it, fill it out and turn it in. Because again, that gives us the opportunity, maybe there's some areas we're not catching and people are like, hey, what have you thought about these? Hopefully we, we know most of them, right? You guys are out there doing stuff. But I think if we could have something that's available to capture that feedback, maybe really helpful.
Yeah, we can do that.
Google click maps, like what we do for the townwide.
The maps that we do for like the townwide yard sale. I don't know if that might be something beneficial. People just go and enter their address. And it's was something that people were allowed to submit for the townwide yard sale.
Yeah, I have to go with Mahala. I don't have any idea.
Good ideas. Any other questions?
Will this affect FEMA, the way they look at the flood zones? At all? Not at all. I thought that's what you said, but okay, thank you.
Yeah. I mean, so what do you guys think?
So the biggest elephant in the room. How much is this going to cost our taxpayers at the end of the day? Will it be an increase in something? I know I hate to ask that. But it's definitely one of those things we need to be looking at considering they're just getting done paying for two water plants.
Bob looks like he has an answer.
This is certainly going to result in, in millions of dollars worth of improvements. So then it becomes a matter of what can the town bite off, right? What can we do? Can we get developers to participate in some of those? So there's a whole range of kind of ways that we might implement these. But the fact is, we're not going to have enough money for all of these, not in the short term, certainly not until we just can, we're, we're out of these payments to the Box Elder Stormwater Authority, right? So even that alone, though, if you, and you'll be seeing the drainage fund, five-year CIP budget here pretty soon. And you will notice that it's fairly poor. There's just not a whole lot of money in there. So then it becomes a question basically for you guys. Is this something that the board wants to try and fund? And how might that happen? We'll have suggestions for that. And we'll have our opinions, engineering opinions on what the highest priority, the best bang for the buck projects are. That's one of the purposes of this, this master plan. But that'll be a community discussion at that point.
Yeah. So this, this master plan is being proactive for a problem we know we have and planning for the future. Even though we may not be able to afford these things right now, it gives us an idea of what we can chip away at, things that we can work towards to start to solve this problem. Is that correct?
Very much so. And the order in which you build improvements like this is critical to be in successful twenty or fifty years from now. So all that thinking has to go into it now. And it's, it's like we said earlier, if you build them in the wrong sequence, you might be overbuilding them for some, something that's upstream that's going to take some of that flow off of that particular structure. So all those things have to, have to be thought about. So it's a long-term vision that we're creating here for.
That's kind of why you included the photo from ninety-nine till now, because that wasn't done. There was no proactivity being done, planning ahead for that. Now that's why we're, where we're at, right?
In, in general, Coal Creek is a perfect example of what happens in a lot of towns. The town got built right in the middle of Coal Creek. Coal Creek's not even there anymore. From Washington down to where it pops back out down by Ridley's, right? There was absolutely no thought put to that. So as a result, the creek pops out and it floods a bunch of houses on its way to where it's supposed to be, where the creek is, you know, down, downstream. So without that kind of forethought applied to something like this, you're going to make mistakes like that. In general, all of the areas that will develop in the future, whether it's in current town limits or in the GMA, are going to follow our design criteria which require addressing the hundred-year runoff event. And all of that has to kind of fit in with our infrastructure plan as well. So it's it's fairly complicated. These guys have done a great job with the modeling. And we're looking forward to seeing what the conceptual designs look like because that's what will inform the, the costs.
Yeah, thanks.
Now, I, from what I'm seeing here, this, you're going to be prioritizing each section, right? So like downtown, I mean, we're worried about Main Street now. That'd be a good thing to be able to take care of that part too and improve that. And mainly, are there a lot of grants out there for this type of stuff?
There, there are some grants, but I didn't want to specifically address Main Street since it's come up a couple of times. So as you know, we landed the big grant for the roadway project. We have also applied for MMOF grant for the storm drain outfall. So we haven't heard back from that, on that yet. We hope to hear in just a matter of days. We should have heard already. But it hasn't happened yet. So that's an additional one point three million for a series of inlets and pipes to get it off of Main Street and down in the creek where it belongs, just north of Ridley's. So that's also frankly required for a C dot project. You're not going to let us build that project without adequate storm drain system. So that grant needs to come in for us.
I don't, I don't have any questions about this. I've looked at a number of these flow maps in the past and you know, I mean, I think you guys are doing a good job of getting the areas identified here, especially the, the area identification map you've got put up here. I know that those are issues. I've been in many of those lake locations. I happen to live in the meadows. But some of these other ones you've identified up in Buffalo Creek and that sort of thing. These are, these are definitely areas of impact and I think you guys are doing a good, good job getting them discovered. So and yeah, if we want to do a survey or something like that, just get public input. I think that's not a bad idea, but let's keep this going. And yeah, yeah, good stuff.
Thank you.
Chris Gator.
Uh, no questions. Maybe you guys did present this level of stuff a couple of years ago and I just didn't catch. That was really good. There's a lot of stuff. I was like, wow, I didn't even saw it. Thank you. I really appreciate everything. Really, my biggest thing would just be work with Bob and Haylor, however, in just, maybe just shoot an email out to Patty and she gets at a test, let us know what that public engagement will look like. I think that's one of the things that we have steadily improved in as a town is trying to incorporate our residents into what we're doing versus just doing stuff and informing them, right? It's, we talk about things in government like that first minimum step is you inform people what happens, the better steps are we start to engage them in the process. So it's not just informing you, but you're actually helping to guide that. I think that would be great. So yeah, I'd love to just hear more about what that will look like once you guys figure that out. But looking forward to getting some ideas of what some of those projects are. And then, I mean, we talked about it in our meeting the other day. I think that stormwater needs to be one of the priorities that we focus on in our, our plan. And again, you said it very well. It's cost a lot of money so that we as a board got to figure out is this, if this is a priority, how are we going to make that happen? So I'm looking forward to seeing what we actually need to get done so that we can start to have those conversations.
Good. Yeah, great. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you for sharing.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
My name is Peter Franco. We have a business on Cleveland Avenue. Been there thirteen years. We have lived with the plague of flooding for three years. And over and over and over. Incremental steps have been made and improvements have been made in the past. And they, and they have done a lot. We still do. So I'm, I'm really pleased to see this.
Thank you.
And then, yeah, Gator's got something he'd like to bring up. Trusty Gator, sorry. No, it's all good. So I talked to the mayor, was originally going to bring this up on my board report on next Tuesday, but since we didn't have a ton on our agenda for tonight, wanted to bring it up. Had a conversation with Brad March, town attorney, just in regards to when we started out as a board, our first wings did not go so well. And a lot of that was rules, our rules of operations are very confusing. And in the conversations with, I'm sorry, not Brad, with Dan is, you know, there's two sides and both sides are not right and not wrong. And so what ended up happening is we have this where we as a board keep going to the town attorney to say, what are we supposed to do? And that really shouldn't be how we operate unless it's like a legitimate legal question. It should be about how do we take a vote and things like that? So one of the discussions that we had was that we probably need to take a further step as a board to revisit how are our rules of operations work? And in essence, ultimately just saying, get rid of everything that's been done in the past. Stop saying, well, this is how Wellington has done things. Repeal our ordinance. It says we follow Bob's rules. Repeal or not ordinance that says Roberts. Repeal the one that says Bob's and actually put together our own operating as a board, like here's how we're going to do votes. And then basically put in place something that says, if for whatever reason our rules do not speak to this, then we follow whatever, whether it's Roberts rules or Bob's, but then be very clear. If our rules that we created and Roberts rules speak to something, we don't care what Roberts rules say. This is what we put together. So basically having our own set of rules that we follow because that would incorporate things like how we handle public comment. How we do that is different than what's in Roberts rules. There's a lot of things that we do that don't actually match up with either Roberts or Bob's rules, but that's never written down anywhere. So my request would be that we work with that. So ideally what would happen is Dan would put together kind of some bare bones outline of here's kind of the main things. And he would pull from some of the stuff we talked about at our work session that we did. And then some of the ideas that we've had, other things that he thinks that are important, he would put that together in like a document. Then that would be sent out and then we could each send our comments on that back to either Dan or Patty. Kind of the idea is it's like a Google Doc, but it's not because we, we can't do a Google Doc from open meetings, but we can all send our comments back to Dan and Patty. They can hold those. And then they could just put all of the comments on to that when it comes out in a packet for like a work session. And then we could have a work session where we can now see, okay, here's everyone's comments on these rules. And then we can work through and say, okay, we like this rule. We want this rule. We don't want that. And it would cover everything from like our attendance, how we take votes, how we handle public comment. If our rules don't speak to that, do we want to follow Roberts rules or Bob's rules or whatever? Just basically work through that. But basically my goal would be get to a point where we aren't needing to have questions going to the town attorney about in the middle of the meeting about how should this vote be happening? Because it should be clearly out of our rules and our problem is currently our rules are very confusing because it's a convoluted mess. So my thought is if the rest of the board is open to that, then Dan can start working on that. We can work to get that on a future um, meeting. Ideally, I'd like to happen sooner so that we can function effectively as a board and not have to keep going to the attorney to say, what should we do here? What should, we should be all be able to say, hey, I know the rules. I know exactly what we do. So that was kind of my thought that I wanted to get you guys' thoughts on. And if we're good on that, then we can have Dan start working on getting that together.
I think it's a fantastic idea with Wellington. Our town is our town and we might not function like Fort Collins. We might not function like really, there might be certain things that we do want to see change. If this is something the board is comfortable with, I have no issues doing that because it is confusing. Uh, it takes a lot of research to try and figure out. So if we had something laid out, it would be easier.
I have no issues. I think this is a good idea.
I, well, I guess I would just say, I, obviously during our first number of work sessions, we did cover a bunch of this ground, especially attendance policy and this sort of thing. I don't, I don't know that we want to waste a bunch of time and go back and rehash some of this stuff. If we want to specifically address the motion to reconsider piece, I think that might be worthwhile. But I don't, I don't know that we need to go rehash a lot of this stuff. I'm not sure that procedurally by us, we've really had a bunch of questions outside of the motion to reconsider piece. So I guess that's what I would say.
Mr. Broten, are you there?
Yes, I agree with trustee Mason. We spent a lot of time trying to develop rules that would work well for the board. And I almost find it offensive that it would just be thrown out after a lot of timing consideration is put in.
Still there?
That's it. That's all I've got.
Okay.
So to be clear on this is the issue that it stands as currently, we still operate under a system where we've got two different sets of rules, regardless of our discussion on how we do things. And what this would do, like a lot of what Dan would put together would be what we talked about in the work session. Cause like, we wouldn't redo a new attendance policy. What it would do is it would bring that into a document. And with that document would also address things that we feel are needed. If we feel like it would be important this to deal with the motion to reconsider, we absolutely can. If we don't think that we need to address that, we don't have to. But what it does is it allows us to go and take these things we already discussed. We don't, again, I don't think there's going to be more discussion that we're just going to say, hey, this Dan's going to put in, here's the attendance policy we already talked about. Here's how you guys said you want to do, but the problem is, is none of that is actually written into an official document that we as a board of trustees have adopted. And what this would do is it would allow us to get rid of, because what happens is we talk about how this is how we as a board are going to operate, but we also have in our law, well, we operate this way and we operate this way. So we actually have three different ways that could be technically right. There's the way that we talked about operating. There's the way that Roberts rule says, and that was the way that Bob's rule says. What this does is it says, scratch Roberts and Bob's, throw those out the door. Here's the Wellington way. And I think that would consist of the things we already talked about. And then if there are other things that we didn't that should be clarified, those would get clarified. And then we would say, okay, if we don't speak to it, what rules do we want to govern in that case? And then we would have one set of rules that we follow instead of currently where we have three. We have three different ways we could operate. So it's looking to clarify it and make it something officially written down. And that way for future boards, they can choose to keep using our agreement, then come up with their own, but it's actually something written. It's not nebulous asking Dan, which set of rules should we follow in this case, which is where we are now.
So this is, this is more of an efficiency thing to help us clean up issues of asking, what are we doing?
Right. I, I think so because it would then, a lot of the questions I had with the motion to reconsider were about my reading of the rules we're supposed to be operating under were different than the mayor's. And those were different, well, mayors were, and it was not that one was wrong. It was, they were all right in one sense. And so we wind up in a situation where it's not that one person's wrong, the other person's right. It's like, well, we're both looking at different sets of rules. This allows us to say, scrap all that. Let's get one set of rules that we officially operate under. And again, it would incorporate those things we already talked about, not, let's not rehash things we already discussed. We already talked about attendance and all that. Why would, I agree, why would we, we, Dan would just put that in. Here's what you guys already talked about. But are there other things we haven't talked about? Like we didn't talk about emotion reconsider. Should we put that in there and just say, hey, it should be at the next meeting or two meetings or whatever we want that to be?
Yeah. I, I, like I said, I, I definitely think there should be discussion about the motion to reconsider. That's obviously a problem we've got out there that, that still we, we should get solved. But I do want to be clear, the town attorney's time is very valuable. And the fact that the budget for the attorney, it looks like it does the way it does now. Again, I'm, I'm not saying that we'd be wasting the board's time. That's our job to do this type of stuff. But do we want to waste the attorney's time on this? And is that fiscally responsible? That would be my question.
Yeah, please.
So in most municipalities, these documents like trustee Gator has mentioned do become, do come forward for adoption by the board of trustees. So that you do have something that's adopted and, and on the books. Um, you don't have to call it a formal policy, but I, um, if you remember back to our orientation, I know it was some time ago. Um, Dan mentioned the town of Netherland a couple of different times. Now that document, that was huge. I don't know if the town of Wellington wants to go to that point, but I think, you know, if Dan would could create the draft and make sure it's all legal, and then I take care of the administration from there. And I can, you know, start adding the comments and create the document. You're already paying for me. Or I can have somebody else help me out with that, but I'm more than happy to assist. Um, but I understand what's being said and, and I think it would help create more efficient meetings for you and clear up any questions. We can post it on the website so that the public could see what it is, so they would understand your operating agreement.
Yeah.
I like it. And the other key part of this is I think we need to adopt something because the only, the other piece that has to happen, we have to repeal our other rules that say we follow Bob's and Roberts, because those are what's causing the problem. And so what we can do is if we can come up with something that we feel functions and then just adopt something completely new. It allows us to just get rid of some of those problems. Because if we just say, well, we have our agreement, but we keep those up, we still have the same problem. Because we still by law operate under these other rules. And again, we have two rules that conflict with each other. It's just a mess. So it's just trying to, again, it is to try and clean up stuff and I think it would help our meetings run better.
I guess all we can agree that, that this would be beneficial in one way, shape or form and would help us.
That was my understanding when John first started talking about it was just taking what we had already formed and putting it into a document. Cause I did read a lot of the stuff that was introduced from the Netherlands, Netherlands, Netherland. Um, and that was a huge packet. I'd prefer not go that deep into it, but just having a standard and that's an adopted document.
Yeah. Great. Okay. I think that's it.